Call to order the regular school board meeting for Forest Lake Area Schools for Thursday, October, or August 21st. Please join us while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A member clerk, will you please take the roll call of attendance?
Sure. All right, Member Haglund.
Here.
Member Corcoran.
Here.
Member Castle.
Here.
Member Tyson.
Here.
Member Christensen.
Here.
Member Rebelline.
Here.
And Member Antonson is here.
All right, seems we have a quorum. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have motion in a second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to scheduled and unscheduled visitors. A quick just note to the board, some audience members have mentioned that it's been a little difficult to hear us in recent meetings, so please just make sure you're speaking clearly into your mic. I know we're working with technology, but we're going to do our best. So, that will bring us to scheduled and unscheduled visitors. As I continue to tune, the preamble here have shortened it significantly, so even though the board is not legally obligated to provide, to offer public comment during a board meeting, we feel that it is an important aspect of our community interactions and have included that opportunity on our agenda this evening. We request that speakers keep their comments relevant to the agenda item that they would like to speak on, avoid making comments directed towards or about any individual board member, remain respectful, and refrain from disclosing private or sensitive information. Speakers should also keep in mind that this process is non-interactive. We request that everyone present be respectful of commenters and refrain from making their own comments or applauding to help keep things moving. Commenters are given three minutes to speak, and the clerk will give notification to speakers as their time is expiring, and the chair will strike the gavel once your time has expired. I have shuffled the deck of green cards and will call speakers by first name and last initial. Please be ready when it is your turn. And this evening I have five green cards. We will start with Laura S., and on deck will be Karen M.
My name is Laura LaFerris Smith. I work in mental health with children, adolescents, and adults. I'm here today to advocate for our school's administration, to receive the tools, supports, and resources they need to protect our children. Firstly, I want to thank those of you who took the time last year to respond to the email that my husband and I sent about our concerns for our daughter's safety. See, last year, while this board was wasting time and funds debating about adding more complicated school policies, my daughter was sexually assaulted multiple times by another student on school property. We were regularly informed by the school's administration that they did not have the tools, the resources, and the supports to properly protect my daughter. This resulted in a court case, and that student has been found guilty of sexual assault. The judge stated there was a clear pattern of escalating behaviors from that student towards my daughter that were not properly addressed. On Tuesday, August 19th, we were informed that this student will be returning in person. Administration will do their best to prevent my daughter from having classes with them. The safety plan created for my daughter states if he assaults her again, she is to report to staff. My daughter is afraid to return to school. No child should be afraid to return to school. As you, as the board, are focused, I feel, on the wrong changes to keep our children safe. Our school administrators need more tools, they need more support, to follow and improve upon the current district policies which could have prevented my daughter from being harmed and their son from being found guilty of sexual assault. Our school administration does not need to hear another ethics policy. We need to build on the policies that are currently there to protect our children. We need to give our administrators the tools that they need to follow these policies our children need to be able to protect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen M., and on deck is Kate L.
Good evening, Board Superintendent. Here tonight on the issue of vendors. I'm listening to her as I was coming up here thinking, what are we wasting our time on? It's kind of my reason to be here tonight. We have a very, very well-done, very competent finance committee. In all my years here, I've never once wanted to investigate all of the vendors that we have. And I think tonight we're probably going to hear that it's a good thing to do every once you want to look them over and to be on top of things. It sounds good, but we all know from previous meetings that some businesses have been threatened. So when you look at that and you're trying to figure out, hmm, is this a good one or not? You don't have any of the tools necessary to figure out what vendor is better than another vendor. That's why you're not the finance committee. And so, as the previous speaker said, I'm just going to ask you tonight to concentrate on building a board of all of you, not four-three, trying to get everybody to really listen to one another, and that means everybody. And then to make some healing with this community, because it's ruffled there, and you're not getting any prize points for what's happening there. And you've got a great administration, you've got a great HR, and you've got a great finance, you've got a great everybody. So I wish that you would all just relax and do the job that you're here to do, and concentrate on the academics for our kids, the safety of our kids, the welfare of our community, and have maybe a chance to not have to have a policeman at our meeting. When I came in and saw him again, I thought, okay, stop this, Sarah Payne, have a policeman at a school board meeting? I think we should all grow up, try to listen to the community a little bit more, and try to make some peace.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Kate L., and on deck is Will S.
Like always, you show your values by what you spend your time doing. I am choosing to be here instead of my daughters from me because I value our schools. Tonight, days before school begins, sixth grade transition, dozens of new teachers, families looking for reassurance, the board is choosing to spend time reviewing vendor contracts or discussing six new or newly complicated policies. None of those agenda items address the concerns of safety, inclusion, or student well-being, concerns that students and parents have raised consistently, including today for months. The one thing you feel that's not worth the time based on its relegation to the consent agenda is the reversal of the board resolution concerning individuals who have been directed to leave school board meetings, the surprise resolution that dominated the July 17th meeting. I'm glad it's reversed, but by your choice to bury it instead of owning the error or offering an apology and without taking any accountability for the antagonistic policymaking that brought it forward, you show your values. Policies are introduced with little or no public input, bundled together in overwhelming volume, and timed to avoid scrutiny. The message, community voice, is not a priority for this board. I want to focus on something in the administrator code of ethics. Another new policy with curious timing, just like the superintendent policies, what message are you trying to send here? I feel our administration is already ethical and already bound by Minnesota law and the board of school administrators that hold our license. This policy is MSBA model, but that doesn't make it perfect. Here's one line. Administrators must not knowingly join or support organizations that advocate directly or indirectly to the overthrow of the government. On its face, that might seem like a safeguard, but in practice, it's dangerous, vague, and ripe for misuse. We have already heard members of this board misrepresent certain political groups as terrorist or hate organizations and reject others based on personal beliefs. And a hasty reverse policy is just on its agenda. I don't know if it's proven for any board to have this tool against administrators. This clause, in the wrong hands, can easily punish administrators for their values, affiliations, or advocacy. Let's be clear, the First Amendment protects freedom of association as well as speech and expression, even when that expression challenges. Educators have always been at the forefront of social progress, from desegregation to disability rights. To penalize them for aligning with movements that seek equity and reform is to silence the voices our students need most. Civic engagement is not insurrection, advocacy is not subversion, and educators and administrators should never be punished for challenging injustice. If this board is serious about ethics and transparency and community engagement, prioritize student well-being, not political tests, not rush policy dumps, and certainly not silencing dissent from parents, students, or business owners, because again, you show your values by what you spend time on, and tonight, priorities are about to be clear.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Will S., and on deck is Ashley B.
My name is Will Smith. I'm coming today as a concerned parent and combat veteran to talk about recent policy proposals and their impacts on people's first amendment rights. So I served eight and a half years as an airborne combat medic. I have two combat deployments with my dad being in the service for Baghdad in 2007. I have fought not only for ideas I agree with, not just the parts that are convenient, not just the parts that win elections, all the first amendment. I did not fight so that elected officials could silence people who they serve. Those dissenting ideas and criticisms are more important to creating better policy than anything else, and without them, everything fails, and I've seen that firsthand. I did not risk my life so that school boards could threaten businesses, owners, teachers, and community members for speaking their mind when board policy is impacting not only the children in school but also the quality of the community. You seem to love to introduce new policies, none of which seem to give tools to the educators. You call it governance, and I call it control. I've seen what control looks like, and when it's unchecked, it does not build trust, it builds fear. I've known closely superintendent, principals, dean, and while we might have our differences of opinions, and we have definitely had some very contentious free speech moments, we were both able to still respect each other's rights to have that opinion and still manage to talk through and how we address the issues. I see instead of empowering our administrators to solve problems, this board is taking away tools in one policy and complicating things in the next. We need, they need their, your support. Improvements on things like building cameras or just time to focus on problems without some new flavor of the month mandate. You're not supporting them, you are handcuffing. You're wasting their time, and their time is supposed to be used to educate and protect our kids. You're wasting time on our tax dollars tonight with a revender of you. That sounds dangerously like you're doubling down on suppressing speech from the community. Let me be crystal clear, free speech is not a privilege granted by this board, it is a, it is a guarantee by the Constitution. And when you suppress it, you don't just violate that right, you dishonor the sacrifices sent to protect it. Your responsibility is to provide a policy that empowers your administrators to provide a safe environment for kids to learn both educational skills for adulthood but also boundaries for students that have yet to fully learn what is proper and acceptable in society. And so far, your history has shown me that you would much rather waste time trying to create contentious policies that only waste precious time and resources and only serve to continue to put our kids at risk, while at the same time trying to find any way to remove a whisper of dissent or criticism. Because if you're afraid of what we have to say, maybe it's not the speech that's the problem, maybe it's you.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Ashley B., and that is the final green card that I have this evening.
In June, I stood here and spoke as a business owner in this community. In July, it was suggested that business owners who speak out are disruptive, that they shouldn't identify themselves as such. And after countless emails asking for clarification and acknowledgement, no one is owning up to those words. I know what it feels like to be attacked for what I say. When I ran for this board, I didn't just face disagreements, I got fake reviews on my business, I got mocked for how I looked. People said, "It was a shame, your mom didn't have an abortion, so you wouldn't contribute to the downfall of society." People twisted my words, but I showed up anyway. I attempted to own up to what I said, I kept talking with people, I kept going to public events, and I keep showing up in this room, because that's what leadership looks like. What I don't see enough of is that same willingness to stand in front of the public and own your words. Too often, it feels like leaders hide behind titles or policies instead of showing up. And if I'm told here tonight that I can't identify myself as a business owner, fine, then I'll speak as a parent, a parent of children in this district. A parent who's tired of watching tax dollars go toward debates about whether business owners are disruptive instead of focusing on how to support and protect students. I can stand here as a business owner, a parent, or a community member, it doesn't matter. All of those titles are part of who I am, and only one person gets to decide who I am at heart, no one else. Avoiding current conversations isn't leadership. Listening, owning your words, and showing up, that's leadership, and I'll keep showing up to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. Is there any item that anybody would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Brings us to action items. Six dot one, where award high school serving line bid, Dr. Massey.
A bid announcement was published on July 24th and on July 31st. There were five proposals for this project. The bid opening occurred on August 8th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom here at the district office. The lowest bidder that met the bid requirements was Cullen X. in the amount of $339,220.81, and administration would recommend your approval. I would add to that recommendation that these serving lines would go into place in December over winter break, provided the production of these lines, the customization of these lines stays on timeline and on target. And the new lines will provide for greater flexibility, efficiency, and food options for kids, including regular salad bar, burger line for kids, just greater menu options overall. So this is a great development for the high school, and again, administration would recommend your approval.
Move to approve, six point one.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
A question for you, Superintendent Massey. Have we used Cullen X. before for other serving lines? And if not, or I guess if we have, how has that gone as far as like timeline, putting them in, how they've held up over time? And if we haven't, do we have any contingency plan about getting them installed over winter break?
I don't have the answer to whether or not we've used them in the past. Business Director Ron Brigati is not able to be here tonight. I can get that answer for you. We did have conversation with Cullen X., and there are contingencies built in in terms of meeting timelines, and we'll show some flexibility if there's, you know, some challenges. We have the spring break window as well. These are custom serving lines, so that's their conservative estimate on timeline, and we have no reason to believe that they can't meet that timeline.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, I'd just like to add then, I'm super excited. We had one, two, three, I'm seeing five bids here, and four of them were extremely competitive, very close. It looks like we did really well here, and I know with a, with a high schooler and having two kids recently graduated, that this is going to be a huge benefit to the high school, especially with the new schedule and just the amount of time that students are given for lunch, this is going to help move things along, so I might be as excited as some of the students to see this get to completion and see it early next year. All right, if we have no other discussion, I'd ask the clerk to please take a roll call.
Okay, Member Rebelline.
Aye.
Member Haglund.
Aye.
Member Christensen.
Aye.
Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Antonson votes aye. Member Castle.
Aye.
And Member Tyson.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
All right, the motion carries, bringing us to item six dot two, substitute teacher policy four seventeen, substitute rate adjustment. Dr. Massey.
In an interest in staying competitive with neighboring districts with respect to substitute rates of pay, we believe it's appropriate at this time to adjust our current rate. I did share with the board a study that was done showing subrates compared to neighboring districts, and you'll see in that report that we are amongst the lowest, and even if you approve this rate tonight, we'll still be on the lower end. But I would say that a movement from $150 per day to $170 per day will put us in a much more competitive situation. Every time we leave, we're not able to find a substitute teacher, we're leaning on our classroom teachers to cover those uncovered classrooms. In those cases, classrooms are splitting kids, so increasing class size at the elementary level. At the secondary level, teachers are giving up their prep time to cover for uncovered classrooms, and while that can be done in the short term, being done on a regular basis leads to burnout and stealing away prep time where teachers are preparing lessons and so on. So I think this is an appropriate adjustment and one that will allow us to be competitive. So with that, and the last time it was updated was 2023. With that, administration recommends your approval.
Okay.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this one?
I have a question.
Member Antonson.
Do we have any idea how often this happens when you, at the elementary level over the course of the year, at the middle school, high school level over the course of the year, how many times we end up not having a substitute teacher?
There are stretches where that is daily. Yeah. And teachers are absent for all the reasons we can imagine, including professional development days, curriculum development time, even though we try to shift some of those to after-school hours. There's a shortage overall of subs, and then our current subrate makes it even more difficult. So it can happen on a fairly regular basis. And if we're gonna, if we pay a teacher to cover a class on their prep time or double up with kids, they get their daily rate of pay, so it's more expensive when teachers are covering those classrooms. Again, on a short term, that's a good solution, but on an ongoing basis, it's expensive and it's a, it's a burden on staff.
Definitely. Okay. Okay.
I just would like to add that, you know, we've tried to catch our rate up, and we still are in that lower portion, so this is what we have to stay on top of, otherwise we're going to be at the very bottom. And it's so important to have good subs, and subs that want to come and want to answer that call and be there for our district. Districts that don't have that end up using teachers on call, and that costs a fortune. So I'm so happy that we are going to approve this tonight because it's so needed.
Yeah, I was just going to echo that, and I know it's been, I mean, I've heard this for years, that it's a real struggle to get substitute teachers, and so I wish it could be a little bit more to be even more competitive, but we have to do it in increments because we just don't, can't do it anymore than this at a time, so I think it's a start.
And I would recognize that this is a fairly decent increment increase.
Yeah, it is.
It's not nominal, and I think it will have an impact.
Yeah, I hope so.
All right, any other discussion? Yeah, that reminds me of a question I asked Dr. Massey when I first saw this, was is this moving the needle enough? And the hope is that yes, it is, and that we'll have, we'll have a wider net here, and we're casting a little bit wider net, and we'll have more applicants for substitutes. But I think if I'm hearing the board tonight, we'd like administration to monitor this and to let us know if obtaining substitutes continues to be a problem, if it is, we need to take another, a closer look at this policy and see if we need to increase the rate yet again. I don't think there's anybody at this table here that would disagree that compensation for staff is probably one of the most critical things that we can consider, and it's one of the easiest ways that we can help ensure that we have quality educators for all of our students, and that is of critical importance. So this is just one component of that. If there is no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Brings us to six dot three, short-term classified substitutes policy four thirty-four, substitute rate adjustment. Dr. Massey.
And in a similar fashion, we're recommending an increase in the substitute rate of pay for classified staff. They're paid on an hourly basis, currently at $14 an hour. This recommendation would be to move that to $15 per hour for those positions listed. It would increase the health office assistant, LPN, again, $1 from $19 to $20. Otherwise, most of those rates would move by, all those rates would move by $1 per hour. And administration would recommend your approval.
All right, thank you, Dr. Massey. I would entertain a motion to approve. Move?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Before we move to discussion, I just want to briefly mention, since there was some public comment on policy and approval, approving policy and how the process of that works, is typically our policies will go to a policy committee if they have more scope than just the board level or governance, and then they'll move to the board for first reading. We're kind of piloting a program where we have a second reading where we can offer amendments, and those are the policies that are on this evening, and then they would move to approval in the third and final meeting, giving ample opportunity for the public to weigh in, giving the board ample opportunity to consider it. This is one of those conditions where that process is being circumvented, and this is being circumvented per our policy twelve oh eight, section four, item D., where if a policy is modified with minor changes that don't affect the substance of the policy or because of a legal change over which the school board has no control, the modified policy may be approved at one meeting at discretion of the school board. So that's why we're moving right to approval this evening, is it's not really a substantive change, it's a, it's a rate change for staff, and it's timely so we can get this in place before the school year. So just a little clarification in case people were wondering, why does this process look different? So with that explanation, I echo my statements on the previous policy and open it up to the board for any other discussion. Member Christensen.
Well, I would just like to say, I think these positions struggle with subs, I mean, teachers struggle with subs, but these positions, I mean, food service, paras, noon duty, you know, so this is a welcome change, and it's, you know, it's incremental as we spoke about, but these positions are really hard to get subs for as well, and as long as I'm speaking, I will, we should have a roll call on this.
Sure.
Because I would, I sub some of these positions sometimes.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Member Tyson.
Yes, so I just want to comment and ask the superintendent, we get a comparison with the classified as well?
We have not received that from our various associations.
Okay.
So I don't have that data.
So we don't know how we compare it as surrounding districts with our classified?
In a similar way that we do with teacher mentorship.
So it is. So this one, I think we've really worked to bring up, because this looks really low to me still. I mean, I feel like these are all important roles, and these need to be paid more than this. While I'm glad for the raise, as Member Christensen said, I just still think that this is astoundingly low to me. I think that, I mean, you can work a quick trip and make just about the same as some of these dollar mills. So it makes me kind of sad, I was a para like Member Christensen, and I just think that this needs to move. So I hope as a board, we can keep our eye on that and see how the school year goes, because echoing Member Christensen, these are critical parts to everything that works at school and during the school day. So I hope we can be re-informed and let know how it goes, and if we're not filling these positions, we might need to move this, if we can. I mean, we don't have a checkbook we can open up and just write it out, so it's all got to be part of the process, so, thank you.
Thank you, Member Tyson. Member Corcoran.
So your good point, Member Tyson, is about a comparison? Is there any way we could, just for future reference? Is there any way we could, just for future reference, comparison with neighboring districts?
Yes, we could certainly do our own survey of neighboring districts.
I think it'd be good for us just to know how much lower we are, just for the future. Like I say, I mean, that's QuickTrip, I was actually thinking that when I looked at this earlier today. Like, QuickTrip, how much do they pay? How much does McDonald's pay? I mean, I know, and it.
I think, I know surrounding districts are higher.
Yeah, and it'd be just good to keep, because they are important. It's hard to fill these positions, and they're critical for our district to run smoothly. So, yeah, it's just good to know. And if we can just keep our eye on it and work and steadily increase them as they go and keep it, you know, just to make sure we don't lose sight of this. Thank you.
Dr. Massey, do we know how these rates compare with our current full-time staff? Like, for example, custodian, a substitute custodian here, we're suggesting fifteen dollars an hour. What are our full-time custodians?
That was part of our analysis, and I think that's a good question. When we look at our entry-level custodial position, our beginning para positions, there's a point at which the subrate exceeds the hourly rate or is comparable to, so we have to watch that as well.
Yeah. But that's my biggest concern here, because I'm tempted to make a motion to increase this. But I don't want to increase it so much that that throws things out of balance with our full-time staff. That's my biggest concern there. Any other discussion here? Member Antonson.
Well, we've mentioned several times here in these discussions about following up on it. So do we have a plan for that? Do we look at this again, like, say, December-ish, see how we're doing in this? Are we able to get people here more often and frequently fill those gaps when somebody's covering or we need substitutes? Or can, like, what's a good plan for following up?
I would offer a mid-year update would be certainly appropriate.
It's reasonable, okay. And do you have a pool of people? Do they sort of cross over, as Member Christiansen said? Or is that maybe just specific to you, because you're already in there and can do it?
Well, I would just say, a lot of these positions, there are openings anyway. If you go look on the district website, there are plenty of these jobs that are open. You know, noon duties, I know they're hiring more at the middle school. I mean, that, you know, those positions are open a lot. Pairs, there's a lot of pair positions open. So I would, to Member Chair's point, I mean, the starting salary for a full-time employee is lower than neighboring districts, as it is with teachers and other groups. So that is a concern. And, yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, we budget with the money we have, not the money that we wanna have. But, I mean, in an ideal world, you would raise up all of these full-time positions, and then we would, it would be easier to find subs. But the pool of subs, I would argue, is probably smaller than the teacher pool. I mean, just.
The classified sub pool is much, much leaner, and we have many more openings there.
Yeah.
Yes.
And what happens, Dr. Massey, what happens in the situation, for example, here in LPN? If you can't fill that, are we going to contracted services then, or?
Those are for permanent positions. But I would say for the subpositions, our district-wide nurses are often moving around filling the health offices if those folks are done.
So that puts added stress on our staff, and that's a major concern as well. All right, do we have any other discussion on this one?
I just want to add one more comment. I have heard from other districts, and I have heard this from people in our district, that if we can get our subs kind of in the system in the fall and filling those positions, and they're happy with their pay, they're happy with where they can go, what buildings work, they stay. So if we need an update prior to December or mid-year, I mean, I hope you'll bring it forward to us. If we're not getting those subs and we're not building up that lean classified group.
Yeah, I'm really tempted to make an amendment here this evening, but I think we need to do further analysis before we do that. And I think that the first couple of months of the school year will help us with that. So if I'm hearing the board here, I think what I'd like to propose to Dr. Massey and administration is that they do a little bit more of this analysis that we asked for this evening, especially on the classified, help us understand how we compare, how this compares with our full-time staff, and then bring it back to us maybe as early as October for reconsideration. And I would echo that for policy four seventeen as well on the substitute teachers, because we gotta take some of the stress off of our staff. And having a good pool of substitutes is gonna help do that in every way imaginable. So I think my feeling is that I would recommend that the board approve this change tonight and know that we're gonna dig into it even more over the next few months and possibly look at it again very, very soon. Does that seem reasonable?
Yes.
All right, in that case, if there's no other discussion, seeing none, Member Clark, will you please take the roll call?
Okay, Member Tyson?
Aye.
You abstain?
Member Christiansen?
Abstain.
Member Haglund?
Aye.
Member Rebeline?
Aye.
Member Castle?
Aye.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Antonson votes aye. The ayes have it.
All right, that brings us to item seven dot one, back-to-school report. Dr. Massey.
All right, well, I'm actually excited to share some updates as we are now on the eve of the start of the school year. Next week, we will bring all staff back in for the back-to-school in-service week, starting on Monday. And we will, we actually had all of our new educators in today. And beginning on Tuesday, Wednesday, and today, we culminated today with the Chamber of Commerce luncheon for all of our new educators, which is always just an amazing and fantastic event. But before I get into the updates related to the school year, I want to acknowledge the passing of retired educator Mary DeFord, forty-year educator, special education, finished her career in teaching at Columbus Elementary as an elementary educator. Gifted educator, compassionate, creative, dynamic. We were sad to see her retire and are certainly sad to share the news of her passing. All right, I thought I would start with a couple of updates on the extensive work we did around the reimagined 2025 plan. As we know as a board, we did a great deal of study and analysis around moving our sixth graders from the elementary setting to the middle school. We held community meetings across the district in our different elementary communities. And on September second, for the first time in our history in Forest Lake, aside from the days where we were a one-building school district, we now have sixth graders part of our middle school. So it's an exciting development for our middle school students from the standpoint of the classes they get to take. You remember all the gateway courses that now sixth graders have an option, opportunity to experience, expanded opportunities in the core classes as well with longer class periods. So really exciting. And on top of that, I'm happy to share that the enrollment for sixth grade is projected to be up, in this case, forty-nine students. That may grow between now and the start of the school year. That's forty-nine students above the number of fifth graders we had last year. So that's an increase for the sixth-grade class. A similar-sized increase in seventh grade and an additional forty-one students from the sixth-grade group the year before, and sixteen students in eighth grade. So we are crowded at the middle school. And if Jason Miller were here, you can see that he's not here because they have a soft open house for sixth and seventh graders going on as we speak. He would say that, yeah, it's gonna be tight, but we're really excited for the beginning of the school year. You'll see in just a minute, when I get to enrollment, the class sizes, which have remained balanced as we projected at that time. So I'll get to that in just a moment. As we get into then the open house experiences for sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade, again, tonight, the soft opening where sixth and seventh graders can come in, meet their counselors and the administrative staff, tour the school, get a sense of the layout of the school before all grades are there and it's game on with classes. And then next week, August twenty-sixth, Tuesday the twenty-sixth, sixth graders only will have their open house between three-thirty and seven PM. All teachers will be on hand, along with opportunities to spin their locker combinations, their lunch accounts, they'll have food trucks on hand for families and students as well. And then on August twenty-seventh, seventh and eighth graders will have the opportunity to come in for open house, get a lay of the land, find out where their classes are, meet their teachers, and so on. The first day of school is a bit in flex for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, as you know. With the web program, we bring in new students alone as a grade level. So the first day of school, September second, will be just for sixth graders. They will have the run of the school on the first day of school. So it's a way for them to get a feel of the school, where their classes are, how the flow works, without the pressure of the other two grade levels. And then on September third, the second day of school, seventh graders, I point out, are also starting the middle school as new students. They will be experiencing the web experience, the web orientation day. Sixth graders will continue to come that day, and they'll attend classes as normal. And then on September fourth, all students will be in attendance, first day for eighth-grade students. Some really exciting developments with the middle school. Again, all of the gateway courses, the different academic courses for students. It's a really exciting place for kids. The other side of the reimagined 2025 plan was the consolidation of Forest Lake Elementary with Forest View Elementary. We are, after a great deal of planning and organization, including hiring and taking on new enrollment, our staff are all in place, we are fully hired with our teaching staff. We did add a counselor/social work, worker position to join the current counselor from Forest View. So they'll have twice the number of student support through the counselor/social work combination. We are projected to start at about four hundred and ninety-one students. I say about because we continue to take enrollment, and this can be a fairly fluid time with families and student enrollment. Class sizes look great, and I'll show you some of that here in just a little bit. And back-to-school open house will be on Wednesday, August twenty-seventh. Moving on from the reimagined, I think the board's aware and the public might be asking, where's this strategic plan discussion? So I wanted to quickly touch on that. If you'll recall, at the last board meeting, we had an extensive presentation on the current strategic plan, a review and an update over the last five years. There were a lot of questions, some asked, some still formulating in your minds, with an interest in bringing directors together with the board to dig deeper into components of the strategic plan, answer questions that the board may have. And after a conversation with a couple of board members and the chair, we determined that it might be best to have one-on-one, small-group conversations with board members where you have a chance to dig into the strategic plan, ask questions, have conversation about the work that we've done over the last five years. And then we would bring the discussion and decision-making around next steps with development or revisions of the strategic plan to the September eighteenth board meeting. So that would give us the better part of several weeks to schedule these meetings, take a couple of hours to answer questions and allow you to dig into the strategic plan. That would be the concept moving forward. A lot of work was done with the revision of the year-three plan, year-three goals and objectives with the achievement and integration plan. Most notably, in addition to other components, was the addition of activity buses. So I thought it was fitting to share with the board here tonight that in addition to the regular schedule of Thursday activity buses, the achievement integration plan will fund activity buses for, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, beginning the second week of the school year. So those are in place. They had bid, bidding for those different routes here earlier this week. So we will be scheduled the second week of the school year to begin activity buses. Students are eligible to ride the activity buses at the secondary level. We do not provide them at the elementary level. And middle school students will be able to attend targeted services, which will begin most likely in October, as we use fast data and classroom assessments to determine academic need for students. Targeted services would be in the area of literacy and math, with an opportunity for kids to fill gaps in learning with that added time. Additionally, kids who stay after and get extra help from teachers would have an opportunity to ride the activity bus on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays. And the same would be true for students attending the high school, who get extra academic help from teachers after school. The activity bus would also be available for students participating in school activities. So we're all set to have those buses start rolling in the second week of the school year. Some really exciting news on enrollment. Current district enrollment is projected to be at fifty-six hundred and twelve students. I assure you that on September second, that number will be a bit different. We're taking enrollment every day. There are students that are on, in our system and on our rolls today that are enrolled elsewhere. That happens every summer. We get that information through records requests from other schools. Some of those have come in, some of those haven't come in yet. They'll come in next week, maybe even the first or second week of school, as kids don't show up with us and they show up in a different school. So that's part of that fluidity of the start of the school year. But again, right now, we have fifty-six hundred and twelve students enrolled. That is sixty-three students over the number that we ended with last year. And we build the budget with an anticipated enrollment. We anticipate, we have anticipated over the last many years the loss of one hundred students due to declining birth rates. With the trends that we have seen with enrollment, we've built the budget with a projected loss of seventy students. And currently, fifty-six hundred and twelve students is a hundred and fifty-seven students over the number that we budget for the year. The number we use to calculate revenue for the school year. That is similar to the number that we started last year. So last year, we were about a hundred and fifty, sixty students over the projected number, the budgeted number at the start of the year. We're an additional hundred and fifty-seven students over that number. And keep in mind that every student is, is, revenue is tied to every student through per pupil funding, and it is our core source of funding and revenue for the district. We are really excited to see the increase in enrollment. It's been well over a decade since we've been able to say enrollment is stabilizing and increasing in our district, and that is in light of declining birth rates. So where are the kids coming from? They're coming from charter schools, they're coming from home schools, and they're coming from neighboring districts. There is development, but development alone is not counting for this increase. Then with that, we look at where we're projected for class sizes. So I'll show you across the grade levels where we're at, and this will vary. This is an average. Kindergarten actually is at, I'm sorry, I didn't list that there, is at nineteen point five. Grade one is at twenty point six, in parentheses is the metro average. So we're below the metro average, or right at about the metro average in first grade. Nineteen point seven six, almost twenty students in second grade below the metro average. Twenty-two and a half on average in third grade. Again, below. 22 and a half on average in third grade, again, below the metro average. Fourth grade, right on the metro average at 24 and 3/4. And grade five, 26.7, or 26.7, just slightly above or right on the metro average. So with increased enrollment and the staffing work that we did beginning last February, through, quite honestly, this week, we added a position with staffing that we had on reserve through our budget work to fourth grade at Lindwood. That staff member was hired yesterday and was in our new teacher orientation today. So that's how fluid things can be. And when we added a position this late in the year, Gretchen Matson, our principal at Lindwood, was really nervous about having a candidate, much less the four that she interviewed, and to land on the person of quality that she was able to find. We're really excited. Across the middle school, you'll recall the conversations we had during the reimagined meetings with families, a lot of concern around what's going to happen to class size with our 6th graders. We shared then that class sizes would stay roughly similar to the 6th grade average that students saw the previous year. While I don't have last year's 6th grade average, we're projected to be at between 26 and 28 across those core classes, which is very similar to the 6th grade average that we had last year in our schools. So moving 470-some 6th graders to the middle school did not blow up class size. We planned accordingly and were able to hit the staffing number to keep class sizes relatively equivalent. And then at the high school, core academic classes, 26 to 28, that would include English, language arts, math, science and social studies. You'll find some elective areas lower, industrial technology is going to be lower, you'll find FIED classes higher than that. So we look mainly at the core academic areas and we're below 30. In fact, we're between 26 and 28. You'll have a couple that end up, based on how the schedule works and constraints with the schedule, a section at 32 or 33, and you'll have sections at 24, 25. It's just the way 16, 14, 16 sections across the school get loaded with students. And that concludes my report. So I'd certainly take any questions or comments.
All right, thank you, Dr. Massey. Member Entonson.
Can you speak a little bit more to the after-school academic help? What does that look like for the teachers in the middle school and the high school?
We've offered targeted services at the middle school in the past. That's all dependent on the number of students who sign up.
Okay.
Sometimes that can be low.
So the teachers, all teachers are doing this? Okay.
No, so let's say we have 40 students sign up.
Okay.
100 students sign up. We'll hire staff to keep the ratios around 18-ish.
Okay.
For those classes. And the after-school targeted services is related to skill development and not homework help.
Okay.
So it's not helping to get my homework done. It's identifying skill deficit and working on skills. So if it's a math need, we're leaning into our math staff to provide that service. ELA writing, same thing.
Okay.
Member Christiansen.
Yeah, I would just like to take a minute to just kind of soak all that in and just realize what we have all just accomplished. Dr. Massey and all of our staff, I mean, I remember we all went to those meetings talking about putting the 6th grade in the middle school last fall. And parents were concerned and rightly so. And people were very passionate in those meetings and again, rightly so. And here we are on the other side of that. I haven't, you know, gotten any emails for a long time about any concerns. The class sizes have stayed about the same, which Dr. Massey and staff had hoped for and alluded to. And not only that, but we are increasing enrollment and I think we could take pride in just that, right there, 6th grade going to the middle school. But then, we also consolidated two elementary schools, also very big deal and on its own face, that would have been a major accomplishment for a district to do during that time. And we did it and we hired additional staff that we needed. Very pleased to have another counselor there and a social counselor slash social worker there. So again, that was really exciting, wonderful leadership from our superintendent and all of our administrators. But then, not only that, and we also did some rebounding work with our elementary schools, which in past times, people had said was very difficult and people were very upset. And again, not very much there that people were upset. So again, you know, very exciting work. So two things happened just this year, major things that I think any other district could have just focused on one of those things. We did two of them this past year. And then to have one that was accomplished during the year but not implemented until the fall. And then not only that, we're talking about some, you know, work to our strategic plan. So I just really want to thank our superintendent, Dr. Massey, and all of our district administrators. Just incredible work, really, to start on that end, being in those meetings where people were upset and a lot of people came to those meetings, which was great. You know, great to have that participation and questions asked. And Dr. Massey was at all those meetings, at least two of us, I think, were at those meetings. Administrators, Mr. Miller, the principal at the middle school, was there. I mean, so much time went into those meetings and answering everybody's questions and, I mean, just so wonderful that we're on, you know, the other end of it, through to the other side. And wonderful success, really. I think we should take a lot of pride in that.
I'm not going to miss the opportunity to acknowledge, and you did, Mr. Miller and his team and the work at the middle school. They were at work before we even started the meetings and just tireless work between then and now. The same with Mr. Ernest and his team.
Mrs. Stegmeier.
Mrs. Stegmeier at Forest Lake Elementary last year. Many, many hours, creative work. Our directors, side by side with those teams, doing their creative work. And they've brought not just the system forward, but brought families along in the process as well.
Member Tyson.
So I do want to just say, this is a prideful moment. This is just, I mean, given the increase in enrollment, that's just a blessing, but we know that we've done that excellent work at the middle school and at the high school with curriculum and building all that up. And people are really excited. I saw a couple of 6th graders in my neighborhood on their bikes and they said, "Starting school tomorrow, Gail." And I was like, "You are?" So they were talking about tonight, being up there for the first time in their building and they're so excited. And so are the parents. And just so much proven leadership and good communication, as Member Christiansen alluded to, you have to have that. Otherwise, we'd still be in those meetings with people not happy. And there's just been no pushback. People are ready, they're accepting of it, they want their students in the building that they're going to, the 6th graders. So I'm so excited for the merge. And I just had one question. So 491 is the enrollment. How does that compare to like last year's for them? Is that like similar? I want to say that it is, but I'm not sure. For Forest View and Forest Lake.
Pardon me?
We can put some batteries in the budget.
Yeah, yeah, we got a lethargic.
We don't have any.
Clicker here.
They said 491 for the merge, the enrollment for the merge.
Oh, before they were merged?
Yeah.
Ah, yeah.
So I'm just wondering what that compares to.
Yeah, we were projecting, just with the enrollment for K-5.
Okay.
Between the two schools, to be right at about that number. This is fairly consistent with what we anticipated.
And so that's kind of consistent with what that building's used to then and what it's held in the past?
It had. We had some data and evidence that they had upwards to 580 at one point.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Good to know. And then, could we receive an update on the activity buses to make sure they're being utilized? I mean, I do have a good feeling, since we added them, that they're being fruitful, they're being used. I mean, historically, we have gotten complaints as board members that we see these activity buses with no kids on them, buses are expensive. We hear about Forest Lake area schools has a busing issue with the cost, so.
Absolutely, yeah. We always monitor those activity buses. When we have, just the one on Thursdays, when we had our different student activities on Thursdays, it was fairly consistently utilized.
Okay.
How that plays out across three days now, we'll have to wait and see and we'll certainly monitor that.
Okay, that'd be good to get feedback on that. Thank you. And then the small group meetings for the board members, which I'm excited to work on the strategic plan with my fellow board members. Those are going to take place here then, prior to the meeting on the 18th?
Look for an email from me, trying to find times that work for board members and our directors. We'll have our directors there as well to work with you and answer questions and.
So we're not planning a workshop night to do that? I'm just clarifying that. It'll be another time.
Yeah, my vision would be that we would have these one-on-one, small group conversations, meetings to dig into the strategic plan. Bring the conversation back to the board table at the September 18th meeting. And at that point, workshop it around, what do we do next? What's the next iteration? How do we get to the next iteration of the strategic plan? What process might we engage in to do that work?
The small group, I was kind of envisioning something similar to what we did with the reimagined. We come in, we can sit down with directors, ask really detailed questions, really dig into that deep. I believe it was two weeks ago when we had the board meeting, it was just a lot to digest. So it'd give us more of an opportunity to do that. We'll bring it back to the board on the 18th, either workshop it then or decide, you know, this is the next step we want to take as a board, whether that be facilitation or a subcommittee or something along those lines. So we'll make that decision in about a month.
I like that whole plan, but I'm just wondering what the logistics were. So there'll be separate small group meetings prior to a workshop and then the meeting. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Member Castle.
Is there kind of what regularly, how we get the increase? You said that there was an increase from last year, what we expected and what we ended up with. And again, this year, we have more. Is there somewhere that's typically coming from or is it kind of random?
Where enrollment's coming from?
Where we are picking these students up?
Yeah, that's a really good question. When we ask our principals, where are the kids coming from, their narrative is charter schools, North Lakes, Lila, homeschool families, especially at the secondary level, kids that were homeschooled in the elementary level, coming to the middle school or high school at the secondary level. Neighboring districts, especially in Wyoming, picking up kids from Chisora North Branch, Lionel Lakes, from Centennial. So some in-district enrollment that supports that. And there is some housing development and that accounts for some of it, but not all of it.
But maybe a bunch?
Pardon me?
The housing development is what, how much impact is that?
Oh, that's hard to determine. I would say probably maybe 10% of that, if that. There just isn't a lot of dense housing development that's feeding into our district at this time.
So that'll pick up when these developments?
For sure.
Get going.
Yep.
All right, Member Corcoran.
Oh, yeah, I don't have the, I don't remember the numbers, but did you, did we get an increase in 6th grade?
Yeah, 49 students currently.
Because of the possible change coming to the middle school?
We're doing great things at the middle school.
Yeah, we are.
People want to be a part of it.
I was just wondering if we get, just because of that change in great opportunity for those kids. So, no, I just think this presentation is just fabulous. It's just such a, I just feel so pumped up and happy. And I just want to express, like, Principal Miller, just the whole, his whole, during all those meetings, he was just so fabulous. I mean, he, you know, he was inspirational and I think he was just so excited. I mean, you could just see his excitement. And every meeting, I'm just like, how are his voice? I'm like, how do you even have a voice left? I mean, he was, he was just all excited. I mean, at the end, he just, he looked a little tired at the end, but he made it through and he answered everyone's questions and he just had all that happiness and he was just jubilant, I would say, that's a good word for him. And I'm just hoping we can get him here for maybe an update, maybe after, maybe after three months or just kind of give us a little update in how things are going and how the staff's doing with all the changes and just kind of give us a little, maybe just a positive update how things are going.
And I would encourage you to attend the open house.
Yeah.
Or even interact with families.
Yeah.
And if you're daring, come on the first day of school and see the buses, families and our work around logistics. Officer Coulter will be out there and you can, already has a smile on his face because it's.
There we go, come on in.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, Member Haglund.
Well, just to piggyback off what Member Castle, Member Corcoran said, for 6th and 7th grade, that's a 10% increase and a 5% increase in 8th grade. And as you alluded to, that's also including students that have left and moved out elsewhere. So that's actually, if you think about it from that perspective, is actually a greater influx than just the 10% is showing in an overall number. So that's pretty significant.
Yep.
Definitely doing good things.
Member Christiansen.
I was just, since you brought that up, Dr. Massey, I know that was a point that a lot of parents had too with traffic and just dropping off. And I know there was some conversation about maybe some different traffic patterns, which is difficult in that area anyway, but I don't know if any, if you have any specific update on that for a family?
Yeah, we do have a number of different traffic pattern changes in place where we're going to kind of zigzag people in, especially at the, at the end of the day. That's the biggest congestion at the middle school. In the morning, parents drop and go and kids come into school. At the end of the day, families get there before the end of the day and wait. So we need to stage those cars in the lot to the extent that we can and have those families drive up and around the drop-off corner of the front door, maximizing that roadway as well as parking lot opportunity to get cars in off of Goodview. You know, Mr. Miller tells a very interesting story from his own child school, middle school, that when he picks his child up, it's a 25-minute wait.
Yeah, I remember.
And there will be most likely a longer wait for families, but in the grand scheme of things, if it's a 15-minute wait, we're doing the best we can and we're going to keep kids safe in that process. And there's always the wonderful school bus, the families want to utilize that, especially at the middle school if kids aren't involved in activities.
Thank you.
Member Corcoran.
Speaking of buses, so the opting in, opting out, is how is that going, playing out with the bus move this year?
That's always a challenge. Most families were finding elect to opt in, even though they're not planning to ride, because they don't want to lose that seat. And we tell them, "You call us the day you want a seat and we'll put you on a bus. You don't need to, tell us you're coming and then not come, because then we got to load the bus assuming they're going to be there."
Okay.
So we, if we can have 65, 55, I think is the number at the secondary level on a school bus. We load some of those routes up to 75, 80 students, knowing that not 80 students are going to ride. So that's part of the analysis that the team is doing at transportation.
So number of buses is similar to last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Member Castle.
Along with those logistics, do we have an update from the road construction?
The 97 road construction is mid-September, I've heard, late September. And I think they're beginning to put the final underlayment down. And the thing about that project, as I understand it, is it's such a swampy area that they had to get the load of fill to settle before they could put the final pavement down. So it's a long project, they knew that. Our transportation system is fully aware and are routing buses accordingly, but we expect weather-dependent mid to late September.
That's better than what we heard last time.
Yeah, Member Tyson.
I have a quick question for the superintendent. Now, we created the campus effect with the high school and the middle school now, so, and I know when they cross at the end of the school day to come over for activities, we have FLPD out there and we have all those safety things in place. Will 6th graders be crossing to go to anything at high school? They're not.
No, in fact, middle school students, we expect that they ride the bus over No, in fact, middle school students, we, we expect that they ride the bus over to the high school
Okay.
and then get off, so they're not crossing Goodview.
Okay.
That's like herding cats, because trying to get them to follow that is, is a challenge, as they sneak out the door and are zipping down the road to get to the high school. It's hard to differentiate the kids who are coming to the high school from those going home to the neighborhood. So it's, i- it's an ongoing challenge, as our SROs fully understand and trying to manage that. We ask kids to ride the bus over, because it's safer.
Good to know. I, I was asked that question, so I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I, I'd like to thank Dr. Massey and his staff for, for putting this report together for us. I think this was highly valuable, and it, it shows all the pieces in motion, not just with staff and administration, but with the board. We're, we're doing a lot of things, and, um, we're not myopic. We can focus on many different things at once, and, um, I think this report is just a good testament to that. A couple of notes that I had here, as people were working through their comments, that I wanted to, to mention here is, I, for one, I'm, I'm really excited about the activity buses, which is why I was really happy to see it get moved into the A&amp;I plan. I think it's going to bring forth a lot of academic support for students, not just the official academic support that Dr. Massey was talking about, but the opportunity for students to stay after school and work one-on-one with their teachers when they have questions. Uh, one of the things that I heard from parents over and over, and I hear it not only here, but at nine sixteen and at other districts, when I talk to parents in other schools, is transportation's a challenge. And sometimes getting to school early, or staying after school late to get that extra help, it's not an option, because they, they can't, uh, uh, they, they can't work through that transportation challenge. And I, I really hope that students take advantage of this, and that once we send out a notification to families and, uh, the students recognize the fact that that means they can, they will have the opportunity to stay after school and work with their teachers directly. And, and I think the potential that brings every one of our students academically is just, it's, uh, it's not something that we can calculate here in the boardroom, or determine, you know, the, the worth of a, of an activity bus. But, uh, I think at the end of the day there, um, seeing these students succeed, and seeing them in, improve in their academic pursuits, that, that makes the extra transportation worth it. Um, and, and giving students that opportunity. I, I just, I hope they recognize that, and that they utilize the opportunity. Um, as far as the enrollment piece, I, um, you know, we, especially lately, we've gotten lost. And, and if we look at, you know, read our local paper, we hear about a lot of the political activism that goes on around the school district, and, and divisive changes, and, uh, um, get the criticisms there. But one thing that I think is important to look at is that we've made a lot of really exciting and really positive changes here, especially over the last year. Admin's been working hard, the board's been working hard on that. We have a renewed focus on academics. The rewrite of the A&amp;I plan, we really doubled down on academic support and academic achievement across the entire district for all of our students. And although I think it would be unfair to pat ourselves on the back and, and say, look, this is, this is driving enrollment, that is certainly a piece of the puzzle. Um, I've received a lot of input from parents who have had students in other, um, solutions, be it homeschool, or, um, charter schools in the area that have, have said, yeah, renewed focus on academics, we're going to get Forest Lake another try. And I, I think that's positive, and I think once they get here, and they, they have the opportunities, and they see what we offer students, I think they're going to stay, and I think they're going to tell their friends. And I think we're going to continue to see, uh, the academic performance increase across the district. And I think we're going to see enrollment increase. And I, I think that, at the end of the day, that's our goal, is the academic success of our students. So, um, a lot of really encouraging information in this report, and, uh, really looking forward to seeing updates as we work through the school year here. Yeah, member Tyson?
I am so remiss by not giving a shout-out to our Director of Teaching and Learning and his whole crew for all the gateway courses that our sixth graders and our middle schoolers are experiencing, because I hear that all the time. So shout-out to that work, because that's, uh, that's what started all this process, and it's just amazing, all the gateway courses, and how they correlate to what goes on at the high school and with the career pathways. So I want to thank them for all their hard work.
For sure. And member Corcoran?
I'm also going to say, it takes true visionaries to do what we did. You can't, we didn't have people, true leaders and visionaries to envision this whole plan. We wouldn't have been able to accomplish what we've accomplished. So our leadership and administration, and everybody that helped get this done, is, it's, it's, it's amazing. So I'm very proud, very proud.
All right, any further discussion on this topic? All right, seeing none, we will move on to seven dot two, vendor list review and discussion, Dr. Massey.
All right, uh, the board asked to, um, for a copy of, uh, three years of vendor lists. That's been provided. It's in the board book. Um, you've asked to bring it to the agenda for discussion tonight. And I would, um, key up the conversation with an acknowledgement, if I can, that, uh, we identify vendors in the district based on quality of product and service, their ability to deliver their product in a timely fashion. And certainly competitive pricing is a component, as we select and work with our different vendors. We're grateful for the services that our vendors have provided. Many of our local vendors, as you all know, also support softball, and baseball, and wrestling. And I could rattle off thirty different student clubs and groups that they, they sponsor and support. So the partnership, we all understand, between business and school is, is super important. And, um, we're grateful for the relationship that we have with our vendors. Um, and you've got the extensive list in front of you for the last three years.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Massey. And I, I think I would add to that, uh, one of the things I mentioned to a parent who reached out to me is I, I think it's a good practice for any organization to review their vendors on an ongoing basis, to, uh, understand who they work with. And in our situation, being a political, or not a political organization, but a public organization, sorry, I spoke there, but being a public organization, I think it's even more important to, to put that out in front of our, uh, public, so they understand who we're paying, why we're paying, how much we're paying them. And that's, tracking that through the board bills isn't always the easiest thing. So, um, I think this report gave not only the board an opportunity to review and, and see where our dollars being spent, but it gives us an opportunity for the, the community to see that as well. Um, I would also add that some of the funds you see there, um, although they're listed as expenses, they may be funneled through various student groups, or through, uh, various clubs or activities. So it's not all direct taxpayer money, but, uh, very, very difficult to pull that type of a report out in aggregate. So I, I thank the staff for putting this together for us, and, and at least giving us something to look at. Tonight, uh, I did add, add this to my proposed agenda, primarily for review and discussion and transparency with the public. Uh, so with that, I'll open it up to the, the board for any discussion. Uh, member Haglund?
I would like to first thank Director Embry-Gidee, even though she's not here, for pulling this together, because I think this is a very good list to review. As member, or Chair Rebly already said, it's good to do this periodically for any business or public entity. And I think it's good for the public to be able to see the vendors that we do business with, and at what amounts. With that being said, I did have, uh, somebody reach out to me with one question, and I forgive me for not shooting this to you beforehand, but I didn't have time before the meeting. It's around insurance. So, and this is on the twenty-three, twenty-four report, and if you can't answer tonight, off the top of your head, that's fine. Just get back to me. Uh, it's Liberty Mutual Insurance, for, is just shy of a million dollars. And the question was revolving around, is this like building insurance? Is it insurance for the staff? Um, you know, what type of insurance is that? And is, if this isn't a local insurer that's providing this coverage, can it be brought into a local insurance company, even though maybe it's mandated by a state or federal regulation to have whatever type of coverage Liberty's providing? Is it still possible to go for a competitive bid and have it be brought into more of a local vendor? If you can answer it now, great. If not, I know it's kind of a lot to take in all at once, but.
I, I can't answer with the specificity you're probably looking for. I know that that is not related to our health benefit plan. It's not our health insurance. So I would need to dig into exactly what that coverage is, liability coverage, building coverage. I'll have to dig into that, and I'll get back to you.
And as I look at it, there's other, you know, national carriers listed on here for pretty substantial amounts as well. So kind of the same question was like, if, if it's on a national level, you know, is there an opportunity to bring that home and have it serviced locally?
Yeah, and I would, I would actually parrot, uh, member Haglund's question there, especially like if there's state contracts that we take advantage of, if there are, um, local, uh, uh, I want to say Forest Lake, but what I really mean is Forest Lake District. So, uh, you know, Forest Lake, Wyoming, Linwood, uh, Lionel Lakes, if there's local businesses that can serve us and are willing to meet or beat, uh, the state bids, and we can do business with them, keeping the dollars in district would be preferable, I, I think, to everybody in this room.
Yeah, I just found the other one on the twenty-three, twenty-four report was Madison National Life Insurance. So, you know, again, if that's something that's being serviced nationally or not locally, is that something we can bring closer to home?
And member Castle?
These are largely all the same account. But if this was a, if all of the files that came out were text-readable PDFs, then we could search board bills in, so every, every time we use a consent agenda to approve the bills, you can't search. So it's hard to find out why we have these companies, what they do for us, because you'd have to look at picture after picture after picture. And I would like to make a motion that we direct the staff to make these PDF searchable.
I will second that motion, just so we can have some discussion around it. And, and with my second, I'd, I'd like to offer an amendment to, to, to tweak your motion to, to say we'd like to have staff explore whether or not they can, because I don't want, I don't want to handcuff them technically.
I know technically they can. I've asked the IT people.
Okay. Um, then in that case, I'll withdraw my motion, since I don't have a second on that. Is there any other discussion on, uh, member Castle's, uh, motion? And specifically, let me, let me see if I can summarize this. Um, you're speaking of the board bills specifically, you want those to be text searchable versus the, uh, image scans that we have right now?
Everything that we get should be searchable.
Okay. Uh, member Corcoran?
So you would not have, you could just ask Chrissy if you have a question. Do you do that now, or do you not?
Well, whether there's a question, and whether you can tie things together.
And what kind of questions, I mean, like, what kind of expenses they are, or what, what it's, what's being bought? Or, I mean, I, what, what is, would be your question?
Yes, in some cases, you can see what's being bought, but you can't. So this list here shows what the annual payment to these individual.
Like what the vendor is?
What the vendors are.
I just want to know what kind of vendor they are.
Yes, what do they do for us?
Oh, what kind of?
And so you'd have to search through all these different documents, you know, and strain your eyes and everything to find them. If you could just do a Ctrl+F, find, and then you could see, oh, here's, and then go to the next one, go to the next one, and you could see what they do.
So maybe they just provide, provide additional information within the PDF itself to, I mean, I don't know if that's something, a vendor name and a subcategory of some sort? Would that be helpful?
You're looking for a searchable function on the data sheet.
You just want a searchable function within the actual document?
Yeah, because I, I, I think.
If it's, if it's easy for them to do, if it's something that can do.
Yeah, and I, I think what member Castle's getting to, if I'm understanding this, when I, when I look at the, the vendor payment history right now, I'm looking at the, the report for fiscal year twenty-three.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
And if I look at one here, it says, uh,
It just says.
Varsity Athletic, for example, just because I happen to be sitting on that page looking at it right now. If I click the magnifying glass and I do a search for varsity, it comes up with zero results. And my suspicion, having worked in IT a little bit here, is it's because the way the PDF was generated, rather than it being a, um, text-based PDF, it was something that was, uh, printed and then scanned to an image, but not necessarily through an OCR process. So the only way to really search this document is to kind of do the stare and compare. Um, and I believe our board bills are done in a similar fashion. And, and I think that's what member Castle's alluding to here. Would that be correct?
That's, yes. And I've, in the previous job, I had Adobe Acrobat, which does a pretty decent job of OCR. So it can convert the pictures into text.
Okay, uh, member Tyson?
Yeah, we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves. I mean, I would have liked the board to be able to weigh in on this, so I just want to do it, and you guys can continue on. I did not ask for this to be brought forward. I was shocked that two-hundred-and-fifty-some pages was loaded into the board book by our admin assistant for this. It, I've looked at bill runs for four terms. It includes mileage reimbursement.
One, one moment here.
Member Corcoran's been on finance for a long year.
Member Tyson, is this germane to the, the motion that's on the, the table right now?
Yeah, you took a motion before you let any other board members talk.
The motions come when they.
So go ahead, make your motion, and then I'll.
Motions come when they come. I, I can't control that.
Okay.
But, uh.
Just wanted to state it for the record, I did not ask to see this bill run. I've been looking at it for four terms.
Okay.
They contain mileage reports.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to.
You can be on finance and ask your questions. You can pick up the phone and meet with Chrissy anytime. Like one member that spoke.
I'd, I'd like to keep the discussion to the.
She said we're wasting our time.
I'd like to keep the discussion to this motion first, then we can come back to the, the vendor list.
This. Wow. Okay.
Okay, sorry, I, member Christensen was, was that on the motion as well?
I, I wanted to speak to the motion, and I might, um, add, or say, can we direct administration to look into, rather than a motion? Like, you said, if, um, I don't know the technology side of it, maybe it's super easy to do. Our staff is already really lean. If this is a big deal, I don't, I don't think it's worth, um, the staff time. So instead of perhaps a motion, we could direct administration to look into if this is a feasible situation. I'm not ready to vote on a motion.
We can certainly amend the motion to direct administration to, to study the feasibility of that instead. I, I, I find that to be reasonable.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, and in that case, I'll offer, um, an amendment that we direct administration to explore the feasibility of delivering both board bills and any other reports where we're looking at financial data in a text-based searchable format.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the amendment to the motion. Do we have any discussion on that? Uh, member Corcoran?
Well, I would, I would support anything that's going to save staff time.
Yeah.
Um, if it would explain, okay, if you have a question about certain purchase, if it's going to say what it is without you having to reach out to staff and ask a question, and if it's explainable by just looking at it, then I would support that. And if it's easy for the staff not to have to take a bunch of questions and provide lots of documents and backup for you, then that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, and it, just, just to piggyback on that, I, I think it would be an added benefit for the general public too, even before being elected to the board. I spent a lot of time digging through board bills, and it was always frustrating to me that if I, I wanted to identify certain expense, or I wanted to identify a, a, a certain vendor, I couldn't search for it. I had to just stare at the three hundred pages of. Now, I, I will add to that, that we, we do do it better than other districts, because I've seen other districts, uh, on the, uh, board bills, for them, they just say, uh, checks number, you know, six-hundred-and-fifty-three through nine-hundred-and-twenty-two, and the amount of fourteen-point-four million. And you go, well, what, what was that? So I think we do a lot of good things here, and, uh, I, I, I think anything that we can do to increase transparency, make it easier for the public to comprehend and understand and digest what we're doing would be a good thing. Uh, member Castle?
I will state that it takes less work to just make it a PDF immediately, rather than print it and then scan it. I've done those things. That takes a long time.
All right, do we have any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. That brings us back to the, the original motion now, which is now amended to read, that we're going to direct administration to, um, explore the possibility of making it as a text-searchable, like OCR-type of a document, and, um, I'm, I'm sorry if I don't have the wording exactly right, but, uh, Joy, I think you.
We're good. We got it.
Okay, administration understands our intent here. So is there any other discussion on that amendment? Or, or on that motion, or should we move forward? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Um, member Tyson, going back to your original comment, did you, did you want to go back and speak on the, the topic here?
I think I said what, what I, how I feel. I just feel like. I just feel like we have so much going on right now, the beginning of school. This just seems like a ridiculous thing to delve into. And I was really disgusted at the number of pages that got uploaded by our staff the time it took into my board book. I, I just don't, I, something seems really off when this is what we're doing at this time of year. So I'm not going to engage, but you can go ahead and do what you're going to do. I feel like we have an excellent finance department. Member Corcoran's an accountant and has been on finance many times over. I believe one of our members that got up and talked, she said, this is a waste of time. But you're going to do it anyway, so you just go ahead. This isn't my area of expertise, but yes, I look at them. When I was new, I came in and met with people. I came in and called. I walked in and said, can you help me figure out where this is going and who this is? But go ahead, take it to the next level. It's important to you.
Okay, thank you, Member Tyson. Member Christensen?
Yes, I just would like to say that I think it is good to review the board bills and of course to be good stewards of the district's finances. But I just want to remind us all that that was not the genesis of this discussion. The genesis of this discussion and the reason it is on our agenda tonight is not just simply to merely review our vendors and look at the best possible way to be transparent, and if it's a PDF or whatnot. This conversation really goes back to our July 17th board meeting, where a Member Haglund said that business owners who quote-unquote "voice harsh disruptions" end quote should be quote-unquote "looked at" end quote in terms of whether they should continue to be vendors within the district. I would like to say that all business owners who spoke out that evening, the June 26 meeting, I believe it was, they all spoke on an official green card. They were not out of order. They were not shouting. They were not yelling profanities. They, they all three, of the three I'm thinking of are also parents in the district, community members, business owners. And they were critical, just to remind the board, they were critical of the policy that was being discussed. They were not critical of the district in and of itself. So I think it's fine to have this kind of discussion, but I just want to remind us all what brought us here. We're not merely just talking about the vendors, and this is really nice. And that's not how this started. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this one?
Yes.
Member Corcoran?
Okay, so to play on Member Christensen's, how she, what she had to say. On the few things that I, the few people that did speak on behalf of, of business owners, for one, Ashley, wonderful Ashley over there. Looking at the board bills, just on her behalf here, when I did accidentally ask Joy to print these for me, not realizing they were so long, and I do apologize for that, Joy. Looking at how much we actually spend annually at Big Apple Bagel, how miniscule that amount is, and how much she does for our community on volunteering and giving back to our community, I was actually in shock. And I, I couldn't believe how little we pay her as a vendor. So I was like, wow, so I started looking at others. And so I realized how much vendors like her do for our community and how, I was like saddened that, that they were criticized as community members and in local. But they, they just do so much for us, the people that did speak on behalf of the way they feel about our, our board right now. And I just have to say that they deserve better, and so I think so do we. We need to be better. So I, I don't know exactly what we're trying to get to here on this vendor report. I, I'm not sure what the agenda is on this. And, and like I say, I looked at it, and I was, I was surprised, so. Something came out of it, because I was surprised at how little we pay for them, for her, and her wonderful contributions.
Yeah, I, I think you, you captured.
Yeah.
I hate to use the word agenda, but I think you captured my intent here, was that I, I think any organization is, it's the responsible thing to do, to, to review the vendors they work with, make sure that the vendors meet, you know, their high, high-quality standards. And in this case, make sure that the public's aware of them. It's very difficult to follow board bills and see who are we paying, who are we engaging with. I had a significant number of people that reached out to me and thanked me for publishing this and putting this out in front of them. And I told them this, this wasn't me. It was just a, you know, a part of the proposed agenda. This is something that the, the board expressed interest in and the community has expressed interest in for years. And I, I thought it was timely, being that we're not, we're kind of right at the beginning of our fiscal year, so it, it makes sense to do it now and to look at. And with the number of questions that I received from community members, I feel like we may have to bring it back at some point over the next few months to readdress some of the questions that I've had just over, like, well, what is this line item? What is that line item? So a lot of good stuff to review here. Member Antisson?
Okay, so just want to make sure people can hear me. I had a, a community member reach out with some questions, concerns around StoryArc, which is in here. And it's affiliation with the, now I believe, passe or defunct or no longer in service Equity Alliance Minnesota, which was under scrutiny back in 2021, fairly nationally publicly, I believe, for, you know, the districts that they, they partnered with, several districts, we were one of them. But some surveys that they had handed out or had children take, and I think it was during COVID, and then maybe parents saw it, or I don't know exactly the chain of events there. But there was, it ended up that Equity Alliance is no longer. But the StoryArcs, so I looked at StoryArc's page, and what I saw of it so far is that basically StoryArc is sort of new programming, or the, I'm sorry, I think it was Equity Alliance, no, I can't remember. Yeah, Equity Alliance Minnesota site says on there, they were excited to share that their youth, some sort of youth groups that they do and some other programming will now cultivate to grow programming with StoryArc. So I'm just wondering, does StoryArc give kids in our, how does StoryArc play into our school curriculum or, or activities? If you can speak to that at all?
Sure. StoryArc is not part of Equity Alliance. I think some of the staff at one point worked with Equity Alliance, so there's that connection. But they're not a subsidiary of Equity Alliance, which is now dissolved. Equity Alliance doesn't exist. StoryArc was, provided the curriculum that we use for our fifth grade leadership program.
They provided the curriculum?
They provided the curriculum and the staff to lead kids through that project. That was funded through ANI. The new plan of, the revised plan does not include that component moving forward.
Okay, so does that mean, moving forward, we won't be utilizing StoryArc? It was part of ANI before, so it's.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Member Tyson?
So I want to ask you, Board Chair, Member Chair, what exactly are you looking for in the vendor list? Fraudulence, legitimacy? And then, I'm curious, do you find that this is your area of expertise? I mean, is it ours? Don't we engage with our business department on a regular basis at our meetings? Don't we see them all on committee night? I've never, in 12 years, had anybody ask me to see the bill run. So I, you say you're having all kinds of people reach out to you to be asked for it. But could you answer those questions for me? Because I'm just so curious.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, as I stated before, it was all about transparency. A question of who, who do we, who do we work with on an annual basis? How much money do we spend with them on an annual basis? Prior to looking at this report, like Member Corcoran mentioned, I thought we spent more with certain vendors. I thought we spent significantly less with other vendors. And I think the, the aggregate report helps us conceptualize the board bills that we look on, look at on a bi-weekly basis and, and better understand where the money's going. And I think it's an easier way for the public to digest that. That's my personal thought. And based on the feedback that I received from community members, it was appreciated. There were some community members that felt like it was a targeting of, of certain organizations. That was not the case. Or individuals that reached out to me. I reiterated the fact that I felt it was just a responsible thing for any organization to do, especially a public organization, to be transparent with the members of the community. Not only are these the people that we are engaging with, are these the organizations that we're engaging with on a business standpoint, but this is how much money we're spending with them, and this is where the, the dollars are going.
And so, but our vendors are vetted by our business department? So do you not trust our business department?
No, it's not that at all. It's that the public has the right to know and understand what vendors we work with and where those dollars go. And this was just a way to convey that information to them without requiring they, they do that individually on their own. And I think it's been a good discussion here at the board table tonight, as Member Haglund kicked the discussion off. He, he pointed out, you know, we do a lot of business in the millions of dollars with potentially, you know, national organizations or statewide organizations. Maybe there's an opportunity to bring that money local. I think that'd be a great benefit. The more local spending we can do, the better. As Member Corcoran pointed out, we work with a, a local vendor on some of our catering. Maybe there's other catering opportunities that we can bring to a local vendor versus a, a chain or a, a national type vendor. And I, I think that's, I, I think that's beneficial to everybody. The schools and communities need to work together. And the more we can work with our communities and the more that we can work with our community vendors, I think that strengthens everybody, because we get great value from that. And that was, that was my reasoning behind putting it on the proposed agenda.
So you don't think that the business department has looked into Member Haglund's question? You don't think there's any big picture behind why we use the company that you brought up, Liberty or whatever? So you, you don't think that, that that's been looked at or vetted?
I, I don't know.
And you've asked?
I, I do know that organizations do a lot in the, in the space of vendor management. It's something I'm involved with in my day job and have been for decades. But it's difficult, especially for the people in this room, to look at the board bills on a weekly basis and understand this is who we do business with, and maybe this is why. So an aggregate report helps them do that. That, that was the pure motivation behind putting this on the proposed agenda tonight.
Okay, and I just want to comment on StoryArc. They do work with 916 and other districts that I've worked in. Carner Blue Education Center has StoryArc. They do excellent work. So we don't need to talk negatively about them. But she wanted that clarified, that we don't have them. But StoryArc does exist, and they do excellent work.
I think Member Tyson. Member Antisson?
I just feel like some of what's coming from Member Tyson is this, we're, like, we're wrong for asking questions. And I don't agree with that way of thinking, is all I want to say.
All right, thank you. Member Christensen?
I just want to say, excuse me, I think Member Chair said something along the lines of the board asked for this review. And I just want to be clear, I did not ask for it. And I, from the comments of Member Tyson, Member Corcoran, I don't believe that they asked for it either. So I think it would be more apt to say the majority of the board asked for this sort of review. And I also wanted to say that I think, it seems like we're trying, the Member Chair is trying to walk back this a little bit. But I think that the people that are here this evening and the people that are probably watching at home are a little bit smarter than that, so.
Would you care to extrapolate on that?
I think, I think.
I feel like there was an insinuation there or an accusation I'm looking here.
I think what I said before, I think the reason, I've been on the board for two years, as has been Member Chair and Member Haglund. And in the two years, and you were not the chair at the time, but there was no discussion of a vendor review. I mean, to me, I feel like this is something that can be handled in the finance committee or, you know, behind the scenes. We're taking up so much time this evening talking about vendors and those kinds of things. And I just think, again, like I said, the reason this is on the agenda tonight, the reason we're even talking about this, is remarks that date back to the July 17 meeting. If we did not have that July 17 meeting, if we did not have those remarks about our business leaders here, I don't believe that we would have this vendor item on the agenda. Because the major, I mean, the whole board certainly did not ask for this to be on the, on the agenda.
Okay, any other discussion on, Member Antisson?
I'll just say, and maybe it's because I'm new and I haven't been looking at these for 12 years when we're doing board bills, but I find them difficult to read. So backing up to Member Castle's motion, I, I like that idea. And hopefully they can, it does work simply enough so that it makes things more readable. This is an incredible amount of pages to, to look at. But, you know, I can tell you, when I was campaigning just this last fall, finances and where is the taxpayer money going? Like, what are we buying for our district? What are we helping support in our district? It's a big deal. A lot of people had questions. So I think to insinuate that we're out of line by asking questions and just, let's just see what these are, is.
I feel like this is an attack on our business department. You have plenty of opportunities to meet with them.
Do I get to finish talking?
Go ahead.
Okay, because you can think that all you want, Member Tyson, but that doesn't mean that's what it is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on the, the vendor review? All right, seeing none, as I mentioned before, my interest here is to be transparent with the public. And I think this report certainly does that. It shows in a very clear and concise way what vendors we work with, how much money we spend with them on an annual basis. And it did, it, it brought up a ton of discussion. It brought up a ton of questions. And it is possible that it will be back on the agenda again. I think it's, it's the responsible thing to do, to be transparent with the public. And I think it's good to have these discussions. And it's good to really understand where the dollars are going. And that's not implying any ill will or lack of capability by any of our departments, be it finance or our business departments. I think it's just, it's us being a conduit with the public and being responsible with their dollars. And I, I don't see how that's not reasonable. Member Christensen?
Could you just expand a little bit more, Member Chair? When you say this might be brought up again, what are your thoughts? Or what, what do you, what are you thinking there, brought up again?
There's a lot of questions as I work through this report. A lot of organizations that I didn't recognize, a lot of things that weren't clear to the public. People reached out to me and said, hey, what is this? I don't understand. Still trying to get more information on some of that. Need to continue digging in deeper. I don't know if it needs to happen at the board level, but if it does, I, I will put it on a future proposed agenda. And despite concerns by some board members, that is not an attack on any specific vendors. It's just, it's good to have these discussions out in the open. Yeah, Member Corcoran?
Just real quick, I know that the finance department is, does a great job, Chrissy and her team. A lot of these things are bid, bid-based, that they take the lowest bidder. They do, they do their due diligence. They're, they have perfect audits in their finance department. I mean, for years, they, they're an incredible team. I will speak to that. I've been on finance for probably 15, 16 years. Yeah, I mean, anything they can do to make things easy, easier for the board to understand what the expenses are is great. I'm sure her door, she's got an open-door policy for questions. She's never been evasive. She's been upfront and honest, and, and she's full of integrity. She would be helpful anyway. I mean, insurance, I'm sure, I'm sure it's a bid process. I'm sure about that. Anything that is anything large dollars has to be lowest bid. And I'm sure there's reasons for that. So, I mean, I'm sure that a lot of the questions you have can be answered really easily with her.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
Yep, I don't doubt that.
I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yep, I don't doubt that at all.
All right.
All right, is there any other discussion? Member Tyson?
So you brought up the word transparency, Member Chair. And do you feel like it was transparent to bring up a resolution and pass it into my absence when I had told you I was going to be absent?
Germane to the topic.
Yeah, that's not germane to the topic, again.
You could answer it.
I've, I've addressed that before. Member Haglund?
I would just like to say that this discussion lasted over 30 minutes, and a lot of it was just too bad. just to badger, it feels like, and not actually ask questions and bring up. They just wanted to try to get a gotcha moment. And two, Member Corcoran brings up a good point. But remember, it's not just for us to be seeing this, it's for the public to be seeing the vendor list. So you bring up a good point, Member Corcoran, and the finance department does a great job and they provide us 300 pages of board bills every meeting. This, I feel, is more important for the public so they can see it in total by vendor for the year. That's, it's just simple math, so.
And I would argue that it would be irresponsible not to write this report to the, the public on an annual basis. But I've been chair for eight months. I felt it was important, so I brought the report to the public. And I think it should be a standard practice personally, but former chairs disagreed with that and they did not bring the report to the public. So if there's no further discussion, we can move on. All right, seeing none, we will move on to items 7.3 through 7.8. And this is the review and the discussion on the policies, the 1300 series policies between 1301 and 1306. As stated two weeks ago, this is kind of a new process to help with the amendment process and help board members understand how that works and help the public digest what amendments are being made. So this evening, we would work through 7.3 through 7.8 to either discuss each individual policy or to provide amendments to each additional policy. So I will leave it to the board here on their prerogative on how we can proceed. We can do this like when we workshopped the previous policies and I can just ask, are there any comments or discussions on each item? And then we'll just move on. And there is no official action unless there's some amendments being made this evening. If that is palatable to the board, we'll start with policy 1301. If there's any discussion or amendments for policy 1301, I would entertain those now. All right, seeing none, I would ask the same question on proposed policy 1302. All right, no discussion on 1302. How about policy 1303? Any discussion or amendments for policy 1303? All right, seeing none, that'll bring us to policy 1304. All right, nothing on 1304. I'll ask the same question on policy 1305. All right, no discussion or amendments on 1305. Finally, policy 1306. Uh, Member Christensen.
I'm sorry, point, are we making motions or are we asking questions? I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, this is more of a workshop process. If, if we have discussions we'd like to make or amendments to make to the policy, either would be in order.
Okay. Thank you. I am looking at 1306 2B4. And I know we had a community member ask about this too. But when I was reading it, it just, I mean, and I get it, this is verbatim from the MSBA, but indirectly or overthrow the government. I'm not, I'm just not sure what that means or how, I mean, to me, that seems like that would be pretty obvious, you know, if you're following along these other things. You know, the other honors all contracts, maintain standards, you know, blah, blah, pursues appropriate measure, those kinds of things. But then to say, you know, something about the overthrow of the government, I don't know. It just seems to me that that could be stricken or we could-
Yeah.
Do something with that. That seems, I don't know. So maybe we, maybe I, or do you want to discuss whatever?
Well, yeah, we can discuss if other members want to weigh in on that. Or if you want to offer a suggestion or an amendment, either would be in order there.
I would say strike that. I would say strike that last part. I think it's a little, I don't know, aggressive or a little over, I don't know.
Yeah, as Member Christensen mentioned, this is a, this is directly from MSBA, but it does seem a bit extreme, I remember.
It might seem a little extreme, I mean, but, you know, there's people at the legislative level formulating curriculum for Minnesota schools that openly say that they're a critical race theorist and like the primary thing of critical race theory is overthrow of the government. Like the US is, I mean, that's serious, I mean, it's on video online. It's openly saying that's what it's about. So I, I don't know. It's not like it's, it might seem maybe a little extreme, but it's-
Let me, let me ask Dr. Massey if you don't mind. Do you have any concerns with item number four here or any member of your administration seem to think that that might be a little extreme?
I would, I would concur that the language is rather extreme. I can't envision a scenario where our staff are engaged in that kind of activity. So it seems perhaps unnecessary to be putting in policy.
Uh, Member Haglund.
It obviously looks extreme, but then you also think, well, MSBA probably just didn't put it in there for fun either. So they must have had a precedence, a reason, a, another organization that recommended that they have it in there in some shape, form or manner. So although likely 99%, 99% of the time would never get used, it's probably there for a reason.
Yeah, and I guess what I would add there is perhaps rather than speculating, give us time to inquire with MSBA on the origin of that and what the purpose was. All these policies with MSBA go through a rigorous legal analysis-
Yeah.
-before they land on their website as a model policy. So it might make sense to ask their staff, Terry Morrow and others, on the origin of that specific language and we can certainly bring that back to the board.
That, that seems reasonable to me and I see nods around the room indicating that it would be reasonable. We would have an opportunity to amend this on September 4th as well. This isn't our only opportunity to do that, so. Does that seem reasonable, Member Christensen?
Yes, that's fine. I, I just didn't know, do we have to say, do we direct administration to ask about that or they just ask about it? Otherwise, I would make a motion depending on what we find out from MSBA, but just obeys local state and national laws, period. Because I'm pretty sure, you know, some of these other things would be against some sort of a law anyway. So it seems we could go obey local state and national law, period.
Would you like to make that motion right now or would you like to wait for administration to come back with the answer from MSBA? I anticipate you to have that information by September 4th. Uh, Dr. Massey?
I would imagine.
I can, I can wait, that's fine.
Okay, so no, no motion being made?
No, actually, I take that back. I'm sorry. I would like to just make a motion. 2B4 says obeys local state and national laws, period. And I would like to strike and does not knowingly join or support organizations that advocate directly or indirectly the overthrow of the government.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment being offered by Member Christensen to strike and does not knowingly join or support organizations that advocate directly or indirectly the overthrow of the government in 2B4? Member Haglund.
As I stated previously, it's probably there for a reason. I don't, I mean, I appreciate you offering the amendment, but I'm not going to support it until we hear back from Superintendent Massey and MSBA.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Member Haglund on that point and I would move to table.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, that amendment has been tabled. We'll have the option to take it from the table once we hear back from the administration. Any other discussion on policy 1306? Uh, Member Tyson.
I just want to add that, have we had these policies before?
These?
Yeah.
No, the 1300 series is new. This is part of the MSBA migration and-
To clarify, you brought them forward, correct?
Yes, as part of the MSBA migration that we're working on, I did. And these would replace the 200 series policies.
Correct. So we know that MSBA has a plethora of model policies. Does every district have every model policy? No.
No.
So these policies have been brought forward by you-
Yep.
-and we've never had them before.
Yes.
We've never seen that we've had a need.
And as stated, two weeks ago, the reason for the 1300 series policies to replace the 200 series is there's many, in the 200 series that aren't relevant any longer. We have a junior high principal in there. We have a job descriptions, you know, I'm looking at our director of teaching and learning, our director of special education. Those aren't really the board purview to set those job descriptions. That's something that we delegate to superintendent. So having the superintendent policy seems more reasonable to me. As you mentioned, there is a plethora of MSBA model policies. And my practice earlier, when we went through the 1200 series, was to work on migrating those with, with district policy as best I could, eliminating some of them that I felt were redundant or unnecessary. And the feedback that I received was that we wanted to adhere more closely to model policy. We wanted to have discussions based on model policy. Anything that was changed or tweaked from model policy was heavily criticized. So that the thought process moving forward is, here's the model policy, how would you like to tweak it? How would you like to tune it? Are there any of these that you find unnecessary? We can remove them from consideration. All of that is on the table this evening and will be on the table on the 4th as well.
Yeah, so I just find it interesting that these are all around the superintendent's work, code of ethics by administrators, all policies that you brought forward that we've never had before.
Yes, and as I, I've explained since January, I'm, I'm starting at the 100 series and working my way through it.
I get that work.
Yes.
I understand that.
The 1300 series I had slated for May. And if you, you remember correctly, we were deep into community conversations about the student groups and over the summer, June, we had policy 515. Those necessitated more attention than initially anticipated.
So it's fair to say-
So that is why they're here in August.
You're working on them and you're bringing them forward yourself, correct? That's fair to say then?
Um, I have been taking, as stated, since January here, I've been taking the model policy and putting them into the Forest Lake template that you see here. In this case, they're, they're pure copy and paste from the model policy.
These are, but some in the past are not cut and paste, so.
Precisely, which is why I changed that practice to be exactly what model policy is. I started that work with the, the first proposal of policy 515 where it was a total copy and paste from the model policy that was only amended to read in a similar manner to what we had in existence. That process is carried forward into 1300. I anticipate carrying that forward into the 1400 through the 1900 series as we work through this, as we move through this work, this school year.
So one last question. How are you choosing which model policies you want to select that you're bringing to us?
So when I started this work, as I've explained before, when I started this work, I tried to base that off of policies that we currently had in existence or practices that we had in existence due to pushback here at the board table about deviating from a model policy. What I'm doing moving forward and what I, what you see reflected in the 1300 through 1306 series is I'm simply lifting MSBA model policy and dropping those proposals directly to the board without edits or changes, fully inclusive of their entire policy suite.
Okay, but you do agree that not every district has every MSBA model policy?
Yes, which is why in the 1200 series, I eliminated, I think, three or four of them. And as we move forward into the 400 and 1500 series, the 1400, 1500 series, there are policies that we probably don't need and we can have some discussion.
But you're making that determination.
No, no, not now. I was initially.
You were, now you're not.
Yeah, I was initially, but again, due to pushback largely, if you recall from, directly from you, Member Tyson, I have changed that practice to fit the feedback that you provided.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
All right, any other discussion on policy 1306 or really any of the 1301 to 1306 series? All right, seeing none, that moves us to item eight, which is a closed session. So I would entertain a motion to close the meeting as permitted by Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3D to discuss school safety and security protocols.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we will move into closed session. We'll clear the room and we will reconvene in approximately 10 minutes.